Members, we have a quorum. If at this time folks would mind rising and joining me in a moment of silence, keeping in our thoughts and prayers those men and women who serve our country. Please turn and salute the flag.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open meeting. Madam Clerk, if you would please read into the record the open meeting law.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, the first item on the agenda this evening.
The first item on the agenda is 2018-006, adoption of the 2018 city council meeting schedule, which I have here a copy of, and it is before all of you this evening. And Secretary Galvin has set the September primary for September 4th, so we have set our calendar accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counsel Harris, motion to approve. Second. Second. Counsel Mahoney, any discussion on the motion? Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
President.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Item passes with nine members. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number two on the agenda, 2018-007, order conveyance of law at A1 to Chestnut Place LLC.
Chair recognizes Chairwoman of the Ordinance Committee, Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to move this to the ordinance as well as the Downtown Economic Development Committee for discussion.
Counsel Liang, motions to move to ordinance committee. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Oh, excuse me. Get the microphones down.
Thank you, Mr. President. Through you to the mayor's representative. The last time that Mr. Geary was here, and I don't recall the dates at all, blends together in my mind, but the last time, I was asking him about the compliance with the LDA that we had with Chestnut Place LLC in terms of where they were at with the financing of that project and what the status was, I believe, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe that there was a quarterly or a monthly status update that was to be provided relative to financing and performance under the LDA to the city. I'd asked Mr. Geary at that time for, you know, I think we're nine, 10 months now since that LDA's been executed, where we were at, he indicated that he would get back to us. I would hope that prior to us doing anything with this in committee or in the full council that we would get those answers. They haven't come yet unless, and other people got them and I didn't, but if we could get that, I'd appreciate it. Okay. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
By Counsel Liang, second by Counsel Palmucci. Any further discussion? Heading to ordinance. Seeing none, the ayes have it. All right, next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number three, 2018-008, order municipal school building authority statement of interest to Squanum Elementary School, and...
Other side.
Yep.
Counsel Harris.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. President, thank you. Counselors, the order before you tonight will maintain the Squanum Elementary as the top immediate priority in the city's ongoing school replacement renovation program that has produced two new schools since 2010, and a third scheduled to open later this year. I'm proud tonight to continue to advocate on behalf of this project that is absolutely vital to the neighborhood of Squanum and the Quincy Public Schools. The statement of interest before us tonight keeps the Squanum Elementary project on the priority list for state reimbursement for a major reconstruction or renovation project at the school, which based on previous projects is likely to be in the range of 70% of the total cost, saving local taxpayers tens of millions of dollars. I understand that the full planning and feasibility process and associated state matching funds will not be allowed to begin in earnest until the city closes out its current project, a new middle school in southwest Quincy. I look forward to working together with the neighborhood, our school parents, and Mayor Koch, and bringing this project to reality as soon as the state gives us the green light, hopefully later this year after the new school year opens. With that, I make a motion to approve. Motion to approve by Counsel Harris. Counsel Liang, are you seconding, or you'd like to speak, or do you want to second? Did you want to speak as well, or no? No?
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions regarding Counsel DeBona?
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could to... To Mr. Hines, if you could elaborate a little bit on this, I just want to get a little timetable on this. This is obviously the statement of interest, and can you give me just a timeline of how this procedure will work for the public to know when possibly, if the ducks are in a row and the correct procedure and time elapsed between the different procedure, when the school could be built?
Unfortunately, I can't give you the answer too definite. As Counsel Harris suggested, we need to close out the completion of the Sterling Middle School, the southwest Quincy Middle School, before they'll entertain this one, as the Squanum School is one of the programs under the core programs of the MSBA as opposed to the accelerated repair program. So this just keeps, this order, if approved, just helps us to keep the Squanum project under the nose of the MSBA. And then when the Sterling and the southwest school finishes up, and that next round of awards, we hope to be invited into the program at that time. It's from that point that the dates would key off.
Okay, and this does not reflect on the St. Mary's acquisition and what's going to happen there at all?
It does not.
So that doesn't supersede anything, just based on the Sterling situation, and when that is finished is when we can really proceed with this one?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hines. Thank you.
Any further questions for Commissioner Hines? Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang, seeing no further discussion. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members voting in the affirmative, the order passes. Madam Clerk, the next item on the agenda, please.
Number four, 2018-009, order municipal school building authority statement of interest with the FW Packer Elementary School.
Motion approved made by Counsel Harris, second.
Second.
Seconded by Counsel McCarthy. Any discussion on the matter? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members voting in the affirmative, the order passes. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number five, 2018-010, order municipal school buildings authority statement of interest for Point Webster Middle School.
Motion approved. Motion approved made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. Any discussion on the motion? Madam Counsel McCarthy.
Just a quick comment, Mr. President. I hope folks are, you know, we've got the orders in front of us of Point Webster, and we just approved the Packer Elementary, and both have been updated, one was 1995 and one was 1998, you know, over 20 years ago. Just to make a point that this has nothing to do with any of the school maintenance, they do a great job, Paul Hines's group does a wonderful job, it's just that time flies by, and it seems like we just renovated Quincy Point, and technology changes, and what's going to go into these schools, both the Point and the Packer Elementary, as well as Squanum when we get there, we'll probably boggle our minds on how small the technology will be, but it'll do the job. So it's a good move for the city to keep utilizing the MSBA and keep going down that road to keep our schools up, keep up to speed, so.
Thank you, Counsel. Completely agree. Motion made by Counsel McCarthy, seconded by Counsel Harris. On the motion, Counsel Mahoney.
I want to make a request, and I am just coming from the school committee, but a facility management request in the sense that these motions can be forced for statement of interest, and I'm new to the council tonight, and I know what has been renovated in our schools, but would be helpful is if we had kind of a asset management list of the things that have been done and the order that they're being done, because they're being introduced kind of rapidly. I see they're being introduced tonight, but others have been introduced before, and the order which they're going to go. So what has been done, so to date historically, and then what is on the list to do, and then what's coming, because we should have them identified before they're even going into the statement of interest, so if we could get that, both for the school side and all municipality, municipal buildings, that would be very helpful.
We can certainly do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now, Sac Commissioner, any further discussion or questions for Commissioner Hines? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members voting in the affirmative, the order passes. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number six, 2018-011, order home rule petition, an act establishing a special account for the city of Quincy's traffic and parking rehabilitation and improvement fund.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes, if I may, thank you. Just seeking to send this to, I suppose it'd be the ordinance committee. This was something similar, I believe I'd introduced last session. Counselor Liang and I are reintroducing it now. This would create a special account, which would be, which would be a special account to address traffic safety concerns, pedestrian safety concerns around the city, traffic improvements, so when a new street light needs to go in instead of the taxpayer getting hit in the short term, or taking out a bond to pay for it over the long term. What we would do is we'd build up a traffic and parking rehabilitation and improvement fund, which would be a resource that wouldn't be taxpayer funds that the city could tap into when we need to make traffic improvements. This would be funded by a percentage of development, new development, if you're over a certain size development, you have to pay a half a percent, a 1%, 2%. It doesn't specifically name a percent. We can work that out in the committee process, but this is about funding traffic improvements, not relying upon the taxpayer, and having the folks who are benefiting the most from the development in the city, they pay for the traffic improvement. So if we could refer that to the ordinance committee, I look forward to working with the chair, having some hearings and getting into that.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Liang, seconded, okay. Motion to move to the ordinance committee made by Counsel Palmucci, seconded by Counsel Liang. On the motion, Counselor Hughes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Just a question, it doesn't appear that there's much of a change from the last time this was introduced, and I don't remember where we, did we place it in committee before, and it just died, is that why you're reintroducing it? So there's no substance, it doesn't look like there's substantive change. Okay. All right, just clarification. Thank you.
Absolutely. Any other questions? Counsel, no? Okay, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Number seven, 2018-012, an ordinance updating chapter 2.150 to be amended to include the words gender identity.
Waive the reading, Counsel Palmucci.
Actually, Counsel Liang co-sponsored this with me, we co-sponsored it together, I defer to her for the introduction.
Counselor Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Counsel Palmucci. So myself along with my colleague introduced this in the last term, it was put into committee and then died at the end of the term, so we'd like to reintroduce it and place it back into committee for discussion. It adds the words gender identity into the ordinances that we have as of right now, that doesn't currently include that, but it does talk about unlawful discrimination against, you know, age, citizenship, status, color, disability, race, religion, and currently excludes gender identity, and so I'd like to open that up for discussion along with my colleague, and look forward to doing so in committee.
Thank you, Counsel. Motion made by Counsel Liang, seconded by Counsel Palmucci. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Close, ayes have it. Madam Clerk, if you could, please, next item on the agenda.
Number eight, 2018-013, ordinance for the Quincy Employment Plan.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, if I may, just for Counsel Hughes's edification, everything I'm introducing tonight is a retread, okay?
Easy guy tonight.
You know, I mean, they were all good ideas when I had them six months ago, they're still good ideas today, so, plus the committees need something to do.
That's on the job.
That's right, that's right. So yes, I'm just passing in homework, changing the date, right. Anyways, Quincy Employment Plan, this is a relatively easy one, I'd ask that we refer this to the ordinance committee. This would create an ordinance that essentially calls on the city to hire more city folks, city residents employed by the city, but also for any jobs that are funded with city monies. So it's just about making sure that Quincy residents get the first bite at the apple when it comes to getting work that is paid for with taxpayer money or paid for by the city of Quincy. So I'd ask that that go to the ordinance committee.
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
If you could, anything.
Counsel Mahoney.
If I could, I really would have liked, Counsel Palmucci, even though you're introducing this the second time, I'm so glad I was here for the second introduction of this, because I'd like to actually add to it, and we can further discuss it when it is in ordinance, the ability to be able to post both civil service and all job postings online. Currently, we don't have that ability to do that here in the city of Quincy, other towns and communities do that. It gives us the perception that we're not opening up hiring to all those who are qualified, highly qualified in the city of Quincy, until it's absolutely necessary. So I think it's important that we do that for transparency, we're a growing city, and if we want to grow the way we want to, we have to be absolutely transparent in the people we're hiring, and making sure we're hiring the best and the most qualified. So I'd like to make sure that we add that to it, and we continue the conversations in ordinance.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you, Mr. President. I appreciate the comments, look forward to working with Counsel Mahoney on potentially amending this in the committee process, and I would amend my original motion for the ordinance, referral to ordinance, and ask it be referred to ordinance and oversight.
Okay, so, motion made by Counsel Palmucci for dual referral to ordinance and oversight, all those in favor? Close, ayes have it. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number nine, 2018-014, ordinance amending municipal code Title V by deleting section 5.40.090.
Waive the reading, I'm just going to leave your microphone open.
Okay, that's fine. This one is one that was introduced at one of the very final council meetings, and we've been working on it for a long time with the administration, with the clerk's office. This addresses, what do we call it, motor, motor to license and used car dealers. So really what this gets to the heart of is, and it's an issue in west Quincy, but this would create an entirely new system that doesn't currently exist, where we regulate the number of used cars that are on some of these, usually like a gas station type lot, as well as the number of cars that can be parked on a repair facilities parking area. So in west Quincy, south Quincy, you drive by some of these, and they're, you know, they're essentially junkyards with rusted-out heaps that have been there for 20 years. Now, if this were to pass, they would have to be accountable for a certain limited number of spaces that they can accommodate at that facility, and I believe as the author that this would encourage them to clean up a little bit, get rid of the old junkers, so that the new cars coming in that need to be repaired have space. So I'd ask that this be referred to Oversight Committee for further hearing. I'm sorry, Ordinance Committee. Ordinance, yeah. No, we'll do both, ordinance and oversight, why not?
Motion made by Counsel Palmucci to refer the item to ordinance and oversight. I have a second. Counsel Hughes, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Close, ayes have it. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda.
Number 10, 2018-015, resolve on the New Long Island Bridge.
Counsel Harris. Chair recognizes Counsel Harris. Thank you, President Crowell. Counselors, Boston Mayor Marty J. Walsh recently announced his intention to rebuild the Long Island Bridge, which would only be accessible via Squanum of Ward 6. This is an ill-conceived and financially imprudent idea. I have pledged to my constituents my utmost vigilance if any formal proposal moves forward. This resolution is the beginning of many actions I'm going to ask this body to support in order to serve not only the people of my ward, but of all the residents of Quincy. First and foremost, I insist that the city of Boston pursue water transportation as the primary access to the island, something many of my colleagues in government, both on the local level and state level, requested consistently since the bridge was condemned several years ago. Boston has never fully explored the potential of robust water transportation for the island, instead simply brushing off the concept as infeasible, infeasible, based almost entirely on flimsy anecdotal evidence relating to emergency response and insurance requirements. With a new bridge almost assured to cost well over the preliminary estimates of at least $100 million, a thorough, creative, and thoughtful examination of what can be accomplished through water transportation is not only responsible, it is absolutely necessary. Other than Mayor Walsh's brief announcement, myself and my other colleagues on the local and state level have been informed of no actual plan for the uses on the island that will be served by a new bridge, that may have discussed a recovery campus, but nothing further, including the obvious option of a major private development that could be used as leverage for some kind of private financing for a new bridge. This lack of clarity is deeply troubling and only heightens our suspicions that once again the city of Boston has no intention of including our community as a stakeholder in the future of the island and its access to it. There are those in Boston and beyond, and even a few of my constituents, who seek to use this vague description of uses on the island to paint our community as unwilling to help those in need, to frame the opposition as an example of "not in my backyard." Nothing could be further from the truth, and I will never tolerate any insinuation that this city is not doing its part to shoulder its responsibility when it comes to those suffering from addiction or homelessness. Our community's record is clear for all to see, and any suggestion to the contrary is cynical posturing. My concerns, as well as many of my constituents, are real, and I will work to ensure they are not ignored. Again, I humbly ask all you, my colleagues, to support this resolution, and I make a motion for immediate approval. Thank you, Counsel. Motion made for passage. On the motion, please Counsel Liang.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd like to second this, and on the resolution, I just want to let my fellow colleague know that I respect and commend that you are bringing this forward to ensure that we do have a voice, not only as a city, but more importantly as one of your constituents in Ward 6, as a voice for your residents. You know, I think it's important to note and reiterate that you're saying that, you know, our, well, from our standing anyways as a city, that our take is not "not in my backyard," you know, and that can be demonstrated clearly by the number of institutions that we have here in the city, whether it's father bills and the number of mental health facilities that we have here. I think the most important thing is that we can't feasibly move forward as a city, as residents, or as counselors, with the lack of information that is here in front of us right now, and we certainly not only need more information, but need to ensure that we're part of the conversation once that information comes in front of us. So thank you again for bringing this forward, and I'd like to second this.
Motion made by Counsel Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang. Madam Clerk, any further discussion on the motion? Counsel Kane.
Thanks, Mr. President. I'm just curious as to what does this actually do?
Well, it actually, what it actually does, it allows us to...
It's basically a resolution that allows the, you know, us to look at it legally, the administration can legally take a, you know, can move on, take action, find, you know, use all its resources.
So they could do that anyway, though, through you?
Well, understandable, but we certainly need to be heard, and I certainly would like to hear from my colleague, Counsel Mahoney. Counsel Kane, are you?
Oh.
Other side.
I think Counsel Mahoney wants to speak.
Okay. I did have my hand up, so.
Counsel Mahoney.
I would like to actually ask to amend this resolution so that it has had some actionable items on it, where if there's any permits or roads, for roads or bridges to be coming to Long Island before the permitting procedures here in the city of Quincy that's brought back here to the council. And secondly, I'd like to also ask for the mayor to submit estimates for outside council in regards to this, and a list of individuals and costs, costs for the outside council, and a list of individuals who'd be able to represent us in this area. This is, this could go far beyond what our capacities are here in the city of Quincy when it comes to negotiating what's happening with the bridge to Long Island, and we want to make sure that we're being able to protect our constituents and the city of Quincy in the best interests of what could be potentially happening. So it's not to say that our legal council is not capable, we have a lot of things going on here in the city of Quincy, and this is a very big issue, and so I think we need to have outside council, an estimate for outside council and a list of representatives who could be able to represent us.
And you're putting that in the form of an amendment?
Amendment to the resolve.
From the amendment. Counsel Kane, I know you'd yielded the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'm just wondering, what exactly has taken place besides somebody saying in a speech that they wanted to build a bridge? You know, what is the big issue here? I haven't received any sort of information that you seemingly either have. This all sounds like conjecture from many different sides, so what is factual, what is not? Is there a bridge that's going to be taken, or was this just an inaugural speech from Marty Walsh?
Through the chair. Mayor Walsh appeared on Channel 2 last Wednesday night, and he made it clear in an interview on Greater Boston News that he was building a bridge. His intentions are to build a bridge, he has $40 million from, that he made quite clear, he has $40 million from the traffic, from the, not the tolls, the city parking money that they've accrued through their parking meters, so they're obviously going to need another $60 million. He mentioned that he's putting a team of people together, so this is not only just his inaugural address, but he also appeared on the news last Wednesday on Channel 2, and I can show it to you and back, I actually have it on my phone.
Yeah, I mean, no, I appreciate that people say a lot of things on the news every single day, but not all those things to come to fruition, but I'm just, I'm wondering, you know, where this is actually going to become a reality, and when we need to do something, and why are we the ones making this sort of declaration on behalf of the city?
Well, A number one, I have to, because my constituents reached out to me. As I mentioned, and again, I guess it was in the news, as I mentioned, I received the most phone calls from any other issue that was ever brought forward in my 20-odd months on the council, was the day after the inauguration, and he spoke of a bridge. And if you go back to April... And if you go back to April in the news, Counselor, not only that, Mr. Walsh also stated that he wasn't going to build a bridge when he was running for office. So I guess we would call that a flip-flop, and just to quote you from the St. Patrick's State Party, but you would call that a flip-flop. And when someone flip-flops with something that will affect, not only affect, it really doesn't only won't affect the Squanum and Marina Bay, but it can affect the traffic even further. If you've ever been out to Long Island, it's a tremendous asset the city of Boston has. And with that asset, you could fit almost five Marina Bays on there. If, you know, if a private developer was to invest $60,000 to $70,000 on building a bridge, they'd obviously want to have a payback for that $70,000. We're talking about a city outside the city going through our city, and that would change the lives of the people in Squanum, it would change all the traffic coming out of Squanum, coming out of Marina Bay, who, again, were the hottest taxed, highest taxed people last year. So I'm going to stand here, whether or not it's real or not real, but if there's 1% chance that it could happen, I'm going to voice my opinion right off the get-go, as I have, that we will not allow, we'll do everything we can, and I'm hoping for support, that we'll do everything we can to not allow that to happen to any of our citizens anywhere in the city of Quincy, in other similar situations which could happen. Thank you.
Counselor?
Also?
Counselor McCarthy on the amendment.
Just a quick comment, too, for Counselor Harris. You know, when you looked at the resolve, it's more of a vote of support in regards to supporting Ward 6, that the council is behind Counselor Harris and the constituents out there. I know that, and I won't speak for DA Marisi or state Rep. Ayers, but, you know, I've seen articles, both in emails from them, that they're going to be against the bridge. I think it's more of a support vote than anything else here tonight. And then, as the counselor mentioned, the administration, probably along with Mr. Timmons and company, will work out the legal ramifications of things if it gets a little bit more spun up as it goes along. But I'm going to support both Counselor and the amendment, Counselor Harris's motion and Mrs. Mahoney's amendment tonight. I think it's a good thing that the council gets behind Ward 6 on this issue.
Counsel Palmucci.
Thank you. Just as an initial matter, and I defer to the parliamentarian, but the amendment made by Counselor Mahoney was accepted by the author as a friendly amendment, therefore the body doesn't need to vote on the amendment. So the only thing we will be voting for is the resolution itself as amended by the two counselors.
Correct. We also need the language, though, of the actual amendment.
Which is what I was actually going to ask. So I had...
I'm letting everyone go, and then I'm going to come back to it.
Sorry. So I had estimate for outside council, list of council, and then the third one was the one I didn't catch or understand.
I was just reacting that, should there be a permit or a permit for a road or a bridge that comes through that we, the council, would be alert to it, so that we could have 2/3 of a vote for that? That might have to be a separate, that might have to be a separate ordinance, but, which is fine. So we can just, for, if the mayor wants to come back with a separate ordinance, or we could draft a separate ordinance for that. I think it's important that the council be, should something happen with regards to the road and the bridge, that we should be involved in the decisions that are made with regards to roads headed to the bridge. So it should be able to come back before us.
So the, excuse me, the motion as amended will include the first two items, and essentially we will table the third and maybe look at coming back with an ordinance.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. Counsel Harris, I'm going to get to you. Counsel Palmucci, you finished with your thought, or?
I'm not, but just to be clean, I would request that Counselor Harris agree to the amendment of the amendment as a friendly amendment, so that we all know that we're voting for the first two and not the third. You want to...
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and could I jump in before you?
Sure.
So I agree with the sentiment expressed by Counselor Mahoney and Harris in terms of the say that we have up here. I would love to see an ordinance, I would certainly support an ordinance that required a 2/3 council vote for approval of any bridge permit over 1,000 feet. What we have here is a situation where there's wide, wide opposition in this neighborhood to this potential proposal. And I don't think, on inauguration day, the mayor of Boston stands up after being introduced by the former Vice President of the United States and just makes stuff up. I mean, if Mayor Walsh says it's going to happen, it's going to happen, or at least he's going to try like heck to make it happen. So I'm happy to vote in support of this resolution as amended tonight. I don't think, I don't think that any neighborhood should ever have any project shoved down their throat that they don't want, especially what we're talking about here, is building a bridge to an entirely owned island from Quincy shores. This isn't something that's usual. This isn't something that happens all the time. This isn't saying we don't like, you know, a 15-unit townhouse project that's going in. This is much bigger than that. It speaks to our city sovereignty, really, and whether or not the residents of Quincy will dictate what happens on Quincy land, or whether or not the city of Boston will come in, and they'll dictate what happens on Quincy land, regardless of what Quincy people think about it. So I'm happy to stand with Counselor Harris on this tonight, happy to stand with the neighbors in that community on this tonight, and I look forward to continuing this discussion in this chamber with both the administration and whatever other stakeholders there are. Obviously, this is for, what Mayor Walsh is proposing is for a terrific purpose. The intent, I'm all there for, I support that. But the bridge is something else, and that, there needs to be a slow, deliberate process that happens in public, at public hearings, public meetings where folks can weigh in, they can be involved, and this council has a voice in that. So I'd certainly support this motion. Thank you, Counselor Harris, for standing up for the folks you represent, folks in your community, and bringing this forward tonight. Oh, what did I say? Did I say the wrong word? All right.
Let me go, Counsel Harris and Counsel Kane.
Thank you, Counsel Palmucci, I appreciate it. I also want to add, though, that it isn't only myself that is, and a few of my colleagues here, that are speaking up about this, or got, the mayor of Boston got our attention. Also, the state delegation, the mayor, we've made it clear in communications to members of a couple of the communities that we, of our concern and our diligence. But not only that, State Representative Bruce Ayers has been kind enough to ask me to be on the state floor on Wednesday to support a bill that would help, you know, block anything that could happen, or basically reiterate the fact of the water transportation aspect of what should be used, and it isn't going to be utilized. So that's why, if my speech seemed long and serious, it is serious, especially it has to be serious if I think that if my colleague, Mr. Ayers, would invite me to the State House to speak on the floor, which I'm honored, and I appreciate what he's doing for my constituents and his constituents. So obviously, a few words aren't being taken lightly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So if, when this fact-finding mission's complete, when is this supposed to conclude, and when will this information be presented? Is this, should this be going to a committee so that there's a follow-up, or does this just get passed, and then, and then what? So I don't know who's controlling that process from there.
Right. So I don't want to speak for the, I mean, feel free to jump in if you'd like, I have my own thoughts, but you're running point on this, so I'll allow you the...
No, no, please, please.
Okay, so, I mean, my assumption was, and correct me if I'm wrong, this evening's resolution would be essentially a declaration from the city council to, you know, encourage the mayor and the administration to go forward with a fact-finding process, at which point, I would assume, although I'm not going to, so I'll ask you publicly, but I would assume that you would be back with an action item follow-up?
Yes.
Through probably a resolution?
Yes.
Potentially an ordinance of sorts?
Yes. Again, I'm not, yeah, I mean, again, I'm not, I'm not asking, you know, the body to have to give their opinion on the bridge, but that will come as the process goes on. I mean, as we get the information, when it becomes reality, yes, but right now, the reality is the words that we heard. So I appreciate it.
Do you have anything else, Counselor?
I mean, that didn't answer my question, but that's fine.
What's that?
That didn't really answer the question, but that's fine. I'm looking for concrete sort of timeline to when this is going to evolve, or, you know...
Well, Mr. Walker, would you care to?
I get that this is a declaration.
Because you'll be essentially spearheading the fact-finding process, so. Floor is yours, sir.
Through you, Mr. President. Counselor, you know, it's hard to put a definitive timeline on, providing the sort of framework that is embedded in this resolution, or the say that we'll have the resources to be able to do it. You know, it could be a couple of months, it could be a little bit longer. The anticipation is that, first of all, we have no formal proposal before us. As Counselor Harris mentioned, that we have the very clear intention, verbal intention, the mayor of Boston to do this, but we have no formal proposal before us. What we would probably do is engage our teams in-house, make some determinations, find some facts, and get the most information we can, provide that to the council. And I guess that's probably a several-month process. In the long run, the bridge itself is probably a several-year process. We're probably three, four, five years out from building this, if it comes to construction, and it comes to final engineering, and it comes to the permitting phase. This is a major, major construction project. These things don't just happen, and we have to assume that the city of Boston is virtually starting from scratch. They have some engineering that was done relative to the demolition of the bridge. They have some knowledge of what it would probably take to rebuild that bridge, but that material's old at this point. So our assumption is that they're starting, from the moment that Mayor Walsh announced this publicly, that they're starting on that process internally in the city of Boston, and we'll be starting our own process as part of this resolution.
Thank you. You all side, Counselor?
Sure.
Okay. Counsel Palmucci.
If I could offer an amendment to add, at the very end of what we have in our printed material, where it says appropriate timeframe, period, I'd add comma, however, no later than 45 days.
Accept the amendment, Counselor?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Counsel Mahoney?
We want to add, in the 45-day period...
Building the bridge on the resolution.
In the 45-day period, what we're really looking for, just to make sure that Counsel Kane knows that there's an actual, that we'll be looking for the city to come back with outside costs for council, list of opportunities of people who we can work with that can represent us, should the need arise, so that we're not caught off guard should the bridge become a reality, because although lots of people say things in the press, we have to actually be ready, should that be a reality, that we're not being, you know, we're not doing the legwork after the fact. Too often, and I've been here, I've been doing this for a little while, too often we're caught off guard, and we're racing to the finish line. I want to be ahead of the game for this conversation. So within 45 days, we have a list, outside costs, and counselors that we can work with in regards to this.
Counsel Harris, you satisfied with all that?
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion, counselors, on the amended resolution, which is Counselor 2018-015, which motion was made by Counselor Harris, seconded by Counsel Liang? Seeing no further discussion, if you could, please, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members, voting in the affirmative. The resolution passes. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clerk.
Number 11, 2018-016, a resolve seeking an update on downtown incremental financing fund.
Thank you. Motion to waive the reading. Motion to waive the reading, and I would move approval on this. You know, counselors, I think, you know, many of us sat here, you know, for multiple years until the folks have just joined us. I know that everyone is keyed into the work and the evolution of downtown. I know that when we had a very substantive discussion, geez, it was last spring before we went on break regarding the downtown incremental financing fund, sort of the thought around the conversation is that we would have a, you know, check-in and an update to see, you know, how we're doing, you know, the process in terms of the expenditures around the taxpayer money that was appropriated. And I appreciate all of you partnering with me on this resolution, but, you know, the goal here is to essentially level-set the conversation, see what's taking place, see what we have coming, you know, in the very near future, and to, again, continue the discussion. So I would actually like a dual referral to Finance Committee as well as Downtown. Counselor Kane.
So, again, this is a resolution that's put forward, so it's another expression of a statement from the council, correct?
Correct.
So there's nothing in here, again, about when we're going to have this presentation, who's going to provide it, so maybe we could add some language here by either the next or the following council meeting?
So with that being said, I think I covered it in my remarks when I came in. I'm going to allow you the latitude, as chairman of that committee, to work with the administration and basically build the meeting, so...
Great, okay.
With what you're comfortable with in terms of delivering on a timeframe, I believe, you know, the body would hear, but, you know, the goal is to, you know, allow you to facilitate the meeting, so.
So motion to move to Finance and Downtown Committee, please.
Yes. Second, motion made, seconded, Counselor McCarthy. On the motion.
Good. I would just second it.
Oh, you would just second it, okay. Any further discussion?
I could, I just...
Counsel Palmucci.
Please.
Hold on, I'm going to get my phone off for that one.
That's all right, no one, no chaos. I want to commend you for bringing this in. I think it's, you know, and all the counselors, we all signed on for it. It's one of our biggest responsibilities up here when it comes to the DIF, to make sure that those funds are expended in a way that benefits the entire city, not just the downtown. It has to be the engine that drives the city forward. And along with that, I just, I wanted to ask, I believe we had passed a resolution last session asking for the administration to present to us ways in which 121A agreements could be used in the further development of the downtown. We never received any type of update. The 121As are essentially a tax break for new investment. That's essentially what it is. It was a key part of the streetworks proposal in the LDA's that the streetworks had. It's always been referenced in the URDP, it's always been something that's been on the table in terms of how we would incentivize downtown development. I think as we're getting closer to the Ross Lot being developed, to our 3 in the Hancock Lot being developed, that the ability for the city to drive that direction of what's going to be developed after these two projects is, you know, nearly gone. I mean, these are the, these are the big bites at the apple that we have. What I don't want to see happen is, instead of updating us when we asked six, eight, nine months ago, how can the city use 121As, how can we incentivize development? Instead of answering that question, I don't want to see an LDA get dropped on the council's lap that includes a bunch of 121A agreements with some developer, whether it's Fox Rock or somebody else, when we didn't even have the discussion. The question was asked, how can we use 121As? The question was asked, how can we use 121As effectively, it hasn't been answered, and I certainly hope it's answered before we're presented with an LDA that has 121As in it, so, I think that goes hand-in-hand with the DIF fund, because that's how we're, that's how the city's investing and driving the investment from outside private sources forward, so I, I think it's an appropriate request to remind the administration that the council had requested that in the past, and we still haven't received that answer, so, perhaps we can...
Sure.
Move that along as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Palmuji. You outside?
Yep.
Okay, and, you know, maybe that would be something that you could work with the Finance Chair to sort of collaboratively bring to push, because I agree with you, it is, you know, not, it's the sum of the whole equal the parts, and it is, you know, collective conversation, and I, and I do believe that, you know, you kind of only get one chance, at least from a financing perspective, to get this absolutely correct, and achieve the ultimate goal, which I believe was always to be, have the DIF fund be fully self-supporting and, you know, with, based on new revenue, so I think that's, that's a good catch. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, if you please, call the roll. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, all those in favor? Opposed, eyes have it? Okay, next item on the agenda, please.
Number 12.
Waive the reading.
Waive the reading, Counsel Palmuji.
Refer to committee. Yeah, what committee would it be? Downtown?
Downtown.
Economic growth? It'd be more the economic growth than the downtown part of that committee?
Yeah, that's what it was previously.
Okay, yeah, and this is just a resolution asking for the, the Planning Department to work on a, a general plan, so that we're not doing development in South Quincy haphazardly, but a master plan for, for South Quincy.
Motion made to refer to downtown economic development, made by Counsel Palmuji, seconded by Counsel Hughes, all those in favor? Opposed, the eyes have it? Madam Clark, next item on the agenda, please.
Number 13, 2018-018, resolve seeking increased roadway funding.
Waive the reading.
Palmuji.
Uh, I'm, this resolution's simply asking for the, it's a, you know, resolution's an expression of the will of the body, I think it is a worthy expression of the will of this body to encourage the administration to consider, while they're preparing for capital expenditures and the fiscal year 19 budget, an increase in the amount of monies that we spend on improving our roadways, namely paving our streets. I think we've done a great job with building schools, with repairing and replacing public buildings, even our sidewalks, the, the number of sidewalks we get done per year has, has, just been phenomenal, and during the Koch administration, but I think if we had to give ourselves a score, ourselves included, because we're part of this, I think we're falling behind on the, the roadways, I think more of our streets need to get paved, I know the other Ward counselors, that they hear from residents, just like I do, about the conditions of our streets, so, I'm going to steal a line that I liked my colleague from Ward 6 used tonight, which is, I'm going to immediately move for approval of this. I like that, I think I'm always going to move for immediate approval, but, so, I think this is something, I'd like to vote on it tonight, and then also refer it to committee for follow-up.
Motion made by Counsel Palmuji, seconded by Counsel DeBona on the motion.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'd just like to say to Counsel Palmuji, I fully agree with you, being an at-large counselor, and understanding that when people try, want to pay for taxes, they want to be able to see improvements going on in the city, and this is a huge investment into the city with our roads, there wasn't a time that I did not hear about roads and sidewalks and public safety every time we were out there in this past year, and I would love, love to see another appropriation of funding for roadways, I think we're, as the city's growing and all of the extra development that's going on in the city, we need to keep up with the infrastructure improvements, and I think this is an area that we definitely need to tackle this year, so, I'll be happy to second this and happy to support this.
Motion made by Counsel Palmuji, seconded by Counsel DeBona, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please call. Counsel Mahoney?
So, I know we're going to get to talk about this in committee, but I'd also like to ask, and, and because it's being referred to DPW, that we have a review of the asset management and how they're approaching this, because as Counsel Palmuji said, we've had a lot of sidewalks done, we've had a lot of work done in the city, but there's an overall asset, if there's an overall asset management review, or, or something that we can review to see how we're going about approaching these things, and also streets that need to be paved, I, I think those go hand-in-hand, that we need to know what, what areas need to be done, so I think DPW should be able to present that in that meeting.
Thank you, Counsel, and, just to be clear, Counsel Palmuji, you were looking for a dual referral to Finance and Public Works, and to move passage, but you wanted to put it in committee, so essentially, we have an opportunity to follow up. Any, any further discussion on that? I'll just, you know, share sort of my own thoughts, you know, we've all been, you know, road advocates for, for a very long time, and, and the, the amount of mileage is staggering when you really consider the, the level of service that, you know, I think we all hope to get to at some point, my only thought is, and I know that this was sort of a conversation that evolved out of, you know, the, the winter from, you know, Mars, where we were paying down, you know, the three years' worth of spend that we had, what, three or four years ago, and I think at that point, the thought was, you know, to now use that funding that wasn't going to be appropriated to pay down that snow, to essentially do roads and sidewalks, but, as we talk about, which we did in the last resolution, being collective, I think it's important to, you know, take into account sort of the big picture, because, I mean, like you, I would love to see, you know, a huge amount of resources deployed to servicing roads and sidewalks, but I also realize, you know, that we're mid-January, have no idea how the snow and ice budget was, but that was a pretty significant storm, you know, two weeks ago, so it is sort of a moving target, and I think we'll be evolving conversation, but, and again, in an environment where taxpayers are feeling the pinch, how do we, you know, be good stewards of people's resources, advance the ball forward with the roads and sidewalks, and also, you know, keep an eye on the bottom line, so, it's, it's a challenging conversation, I think we go through this exercise every single year of budget time, but, you know, I, I can appreciate the, the sentiment, for sure. Counsel DeBona?
If I could at this, this time, and it is kind of an appropriated time, because we're talking about this, is there, and just, this through you to the mayor's representative, is there any other ways or any other funding that we can do for our roads right now, besides our Chapter 90 and this particular funding it through bonding or, or through the budget?
Mr. Walker?
Through, through you, Mr. President, the mayor will be talking to you folks and to the public within the next several weeks, relative to a package for roads this coming year, it's been something that's being, been worked on for quite some time, something I know you've, a lot of you have probably had individual discussions with the mayor about, obviously, it's been a discussion down here, on different, on different subjects, it's sort of, always sort of filters in to those different subjects, but he's fully expecting, fully planning to put together a road package in the next couple of weeks, months, and we'll have that discussion relative to funding sources as that process goes, goes further.
Thank you, Mr. Walker. You outside, Counsel?
Yep.
Okay, motion made by Counsel Palmuji, seconded by Counsel DeBona, to go to both Finance and Public Works, and that it will be up for a vote as well, so Madam Clark, if you will please, call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmuji.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members, voting in the affirmative, the resolution passes. Our next item on the agenda, please.
14, 2018-019, a resolve in creation of a residential property tax exemption.
Counsel Palmuji.
Yes, waive the reading, this is a resolution that I believe I had introduced last session, and then I don't think we did anything with it, just went to committee, I would move for immediate approval. What this would do is request that, I tell you, that's dangerous, Billy, it's essentially asking the administration to work with the council to fashion and introduce, within the next 90 days, an ordinance that would create a residential property tax exemption, the goal of that ordinance would be for the taxpayers who own and occupy their home to save on their tax bill by having a portion of their tax bill exempted from taxation, so if you own your home in Quincy and you live in your home in Quincy, this would save you on your taxes, and again, this is an effort to make sure that folks, Quincy residents aren't priced out of Quincy due to the real estate market, especially, especially the folks that can least afford tax increases based on value, even though we lower the tax rate, the city lowers the tax rate, the values in the market dictate essentially what the taxes people are going to pay are, so, seniors on a fixed income, you know, raise their family in the house, want to stay in their home, they should be able to, and we should do everything we can to, to make sure that, that, that happens, and I think this would go a long way towards doing that, so I'd, I'd move for immediate approval, and then also refer it to Finance Committee.
Motion on the floor to approve, Counsel Mahoney?
Second the motion, and, again, for Counsel Palmuji for bringing this forward, I think we want to also see in the finance, there's formulas, there's calculators on, on, on state sites that will allow you to be able to plug in certain numbers, to be able to see where you can be, so I'd like to see that Finance Committee, when it does come into finance, the breakout of single-family residentially-owned properties and the percentages of options for us to be able to do this, because I do think this is something that the city of Quincy should be putting forward.
Counsel Liang, thank you, Counsel.
Thank you, Ms. President, I just want to, you know...
So, of course, I'll be supporting this, and I want to thank my colleague for, for introducing this, I do want to take this opportunity also to mention and thank both Colleen and John in the assessor's office, I've had extensive conversations with them about a residential property tax exemption, and just like Counsel Mahoney had mentioned, there are calculators and formulas with the state that dictate how tax rates are set, not just between commercial and residential, but then even within those categories, you know, apartment buildings, single-family homes, you know, income family homes, and from that calculation, then you get your rate, and depending on what property you own, would get taxed accordingly, and so there's extensive information, they've actually run through some trials, you know, with these formulas, to see what the positive or negative net effect would be, as we currently stand with our commercial and residential growth, with creating a residential tax exemption, and currently, as is, it would be negative with the formulas that were given, that being said, I do believe that it's important that we don't necessarily stop the conversation and say, well, that's it, it's, it's not going to help anybody, so we just move on, I think that this is something that we should continue to explore and see what else is out there, to make this manageable for the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, motion made by Counsel Hughes?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much, Mr. President, just a question, just a clarification, so this is a tax exemption, right, not a class shift? So, before, we had talked about in the last term, I just want to be clear, that we would make non-owner-occupied residence, residences, commercial property for the purposes of taxation, that's not what, that's not a part of this, is that, is that correct?
I think all classes should be created equal.
Hmm, I, I just, just, just out of curiosity, right, is, is that what you're saying? So, you're looking at a tax exemption for people who live in their home?
Yeah, so this is, this is something similar to what Boston does, where if you, it's very straightforward, if you live and own your home, if you own your home and live in it, in the city of Quincy, you get a, an exemption on a portion of your taxes, so it's a percentage, and it's...
Right.
As can be funded in offset, so, if you own a property in Quincy, and it's a, you know, a 20-unit apartment building...
You're not getting that exemption.
You're not getting that exemption.
Yeah, no, I get it.
So, you're not necessarily increasing taxes on one person, you're just, or one class, you're decreasing by way of exemption, not shifting the rates, changing the rates.
No, that's, I just wanted to make sure that that was not a part of this, because that was separate legislation, if you will, that we talked about in the last term as well, and I think that died as well, so I just want to make sure that we weren't sort of reviving that piece of it, and just talking about an exemption for owner-occupied residents.
I have no recollection of that, but that's not what this seeks to do.
Okay, good, thank you.
You outside?
That's it, I'm good, yeah.
Thank you, and, just to kind of wrap it up, I appreciate the sentiment of the, of the resolution, I'm certainly open to, you know, having a discussion, it's, it's a very, and I don't know the program that Boston's putting out there right now, quite honestly, but, it's always one of those very interesting conversations, you absolutely want to, you know, make it affordable for folks that are here to, to stay here, and I completely support that sentiment, what I'd be interested in, and I'm sure we can hammer this out in committee in our information ask, is sort of what the, what the current layout looks like from, you know, the business perspective, the multiple-family owners, as well as the single-family owner-occupied residents, but, you know, it, it always is kind of one of those cross-subsidation conversations, so, you know, if you're creating an exemption in one place, you're essentially going to make up the revenue in another place, and, which I, I guess more will be revealed as far as that conversation goes, but the other side, too, when we talk about taxes, you know, this body always is engaged every year in the budget conversation, as well as subsequent expenditures that essentially create the, you know, the, the tax, so, again, I look forward to the discussion, I always think it's good to put things on the table and get people talking and thinking through it, but I, I just, I wonder, you know, from a big picture, what, what this would actually look like, and I'm assuming that through committee, the assessor will be able to provide most, if not all, of the answers to those questions, but, Counsel Palmuji?
Yes, in addition to the immediate passage, I'd, I'd ask that it be referred to the, to the Finance Committee as well for follow-up, and just, Counsel Liang, refresh my recollection as to what you were talking about?
Yes.
And that was the, where, where I wanted to treat the...
Yes.
The, the largest 20 apartment buildings in the city as commercial properties, which this council passed and the mayor didn't sign, so it didn't become law, that's what you were referring to?
Yes, yes.
Yes, no?
I wanted to make sure that was a part of this.
It's not, but it reminds me, I should recycle that and reintroduce it, and have that discussion with the mayor again, so thank you.
Thank you, so we'll be referring this to Finance, motion made by Counsel Palmuji, seconded by Counsel Liang.
Mahoney.
Mahoney, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmuji.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members, voting in the affirmative, the resolution passes. Next item on the agenda, number 15.
Number 15, 2018-020.
Waive the reading.
Motion to move approval, and please send a note of thanks.
Motion approved by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel DeBona, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris. Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmuji. President Crowell.
Yes, nine members, voting in the affirmative. Next item on the agenda, please, Madam Clark?
Number 16, 2018-021.
Motion to approve, and please send a note of thanks. Motion approved by Counsel Kane, seconded by Counsel DeBona, Madam Clark, please call on the motion, Counselor?
If I could, Mr. President, briefly, through you to the mayor's representative, as it's the mayor that is introducing these, I just, I understand what DARE is, and I'll support this, what, what's the difference between DARE and crime prevention, where, where does the $50 to crime prevention go? Where's the, the $2,100 to DARE, I, I understand where that goes, Mr. Walker?
To Madam Auditor.
To the auditor.
Thanks, Madam Auditor.
Through you to the mayor's representative?
Through you, Mr. President, I respectfully ask that the auditor handle that one?
Yes, Counselor, so, there is a specific account that we have set up for crime prevention, and that's where these particular donations go into, and we have a separate account for anyone that donates to DARE, so any monies that are donated to DARE go into this account in a choose-for-the-dare program.
I, I don't know that I've ever noticed one go into crime...
Demone.
Demone, and we usually do get, Demone, and we usually do get that every year, and it does go into crime prevention.
That's very nice of her to think of that every year, that's nice. No, thank you, appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion, Counsel Palmucci?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Seeing none. Madam Clark, please call the roll.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel DeBona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
I hope she wasn't listening.
Counsel Hughes.
Yes.
Counsel Liang.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
President Crowell.
Yes.
Nine members.
Nine members, voting in the affirmative. The item passes. Next item on the agenda.
That concludes the agenda for this evening.
That concludes this evening's agenda. We have approval of previous meeting minutes, and this will-
Two separate votes? Traditions?
Two separate votes, because obviously the last time that we met was the inauguration, so we never took care of December 18, 2017, so, a motion to approve, made by Counsel Hughes, seconded by Counsel Kane. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Next approval of previous meeting minutes was January 8 meeting. Motion made by Counsel Hughes for approval, seconded by Counsel DeBona. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Communication and reports from the mayor, other city officers, and city boards. City clerk, Madam Clark.
Thank you, President Crowell. I do have some new traffics to commend this evening that we will refer to Ordinance Committee for Advertising. Ward 3, add two hour parking on both sides of Lincoln Ave, Newport Ave, and Winthrop Ave. Ward 3, add no parking on 378 Belmont Street. Ward 5, add handicap parking loading zone at 119 Bronfield Street. Ward 5, add handicap parking at 63 Davis Street. And Ward 6, add handicap parking at 180 Billings Road. Again, they'll be referred to ordinance and advertised.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Any unfinished business in preceding meetings? Seeing none. Reports of committees? Nothing, seeing none. The presentations of petitions, memorials, and remonstrance? Seeing none. Motions, orders, and resolutions? It's quiet. Scheduling of committee meetings and public hearings? Seeing none? Do you have something?
No.
Yeah. At this point, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. All right, so moved. Thank you, everyone.